It's great that everybody could come out on a Memorial Day weekend. Thank you for coming. I've been nervous as a cat all week because... Hot, louder? How about that? I've been nervous as a cat all week because I got one group of colleagues who said this is the worst weekend of the year to have this meeting. And another group who was saying it's the best weekend of the year because people come in. So looking now at all these good faces, I'm going with it's the best weekend. Thanks for coming. I want to first thank all of the concerned citizens of Port Mansfield who have supported us these last two years since Hill Culpepper brought us together for the first time in April 2023. We've come a long way. I just want to say a few things here before we start, first of all, because it is Memorial Day weekend. We need to take a moment and remember all those family members, fathers, sons, brothers, friends and neighbors who have worn the uniform of our country and made the ultimate sacrifice to defend our freedoms. And we say to them, God keep you with the warmth of our gratitude. Let's just take a second. Tomorrow is actually their day of remembrance. But today, for the next two hours, this is all about you and about our town, whose work and about the people of this town, whose work of retirement or love of this coastal environment has brought them to what used to be called Redfish Bay for decades. And who now hold in their hands an important decision about the future, one that we don't think can be put off any longer. We have been on a long learning curve. In the past year alone, we have exposed a company called North American Standards, Inc., as unfit to take over this port. We have forced the termination of its 50-year lease. We have blocked an airport expansion that was going to send a runway out into the ranch land and start a terrible conflict with our neighbors. We have removed the board chairman who championed an unworkable container port idea on our tiny residential harbor. And we have voted in Eric Kennedy to restore integrity to the navigation district court. And he's here, so let's give him a hand for that. And also that extends to Stephen Kendrick, who I think is also here and is a great partner. And finally, we've become aware, fully aware for the first time really, of the constitutional right we possess as the registered voters of Port Mansfield to incorporate as a municipality through a democratic election. We have three options. We can decide to leave things as they are under a navigation district run by Ronald Mills and a three-member majority on that board. It means more incompetence and more negligence like what we have just witnessed with the Newport subdivision fiasco. It means putting our fate in the hands of a company like North American Standards. Doing nothing exposes us to ill-conceived or fraudulent development schemes that can be rammed through by a poorly informed majority of this board. We don't have a level playing field for business in this town because of that. And gossip seems to be our only news. Secondly, we can shrink the navigation district, which is an idea that is floated around a little bit. I mistakenly called it the Kennedy plan. It's just, he was kicking it around with some people. And I think there are probably 20 plans or ideas he's kicked around as we all have. But shrinking the navigation district is worth looking at. And it would require us to basically go to the legislature to ask them what they undo, what they did in 2009 when they stretched those additional precincts out across the western part of the county. And didn't allow us to vote in those precincts. And that is where the majority of the board is from. That doesn't work for us. It basically disenfranchised our voting rights. So the problem with shrinking the navigation district, it has some pluses. It would bring with it some relationships with the Corps of Engineers, with Tech dot, which writes most of the big grants for capital improvements in Port. But it has a big problem, and that is that for our, say, what we would call our preferred members of this board, Mr. Kendrick and Chairman Kennedy, if they got in the car and drove up to Austin and said, "We would like to dismantle this navigation district because it is a failure and it's disenfranchised port, and we deserve self-rule in Port Mansfield. So we ask you to shrink the navigation district and bring it back." The problem is that when they're driving up, guess who's in the car behind them? Ronald Mills and those three members of that board who are going to go up there and argue that this is an attempt to overthrow their elected majority on the navigation district board. And if you're a legislator and you see half of one portion of a board come up against another portion of a board, the politics of that are very treacherous for them because they would be, in a sense, undoing a democratically elected board, no matter how much it deserves to be undone. And that's different than an approach that could be made by a municipality because we're not talking about overthrowing anyone. We're talking about an expression of the will of the people of this town to rule themselves as a new municipality. And that is not undemocratic at all. That is the soul of democracy under our constitution. And we could take with us the very long list of indictments against this navigation district board that would enable the legislature to make that decision, that this board is bankrupt in terms of its efficacy since it was formed in 1948. And we need to try something else since these people want self-rule. The third option is self-rule. We are not here today to vote on anything. Want to make that clear. What we are seeking is an opportunity to have an election campaign that will give us several months to continue this conversation before we vote for a municipality. And by the way, because of the way the law is written, we would also be voting for a mayor and two aldermen that if we win, they take over as the new government of the municipality, the city of Port Mansfield. Now, that'll be a city in name only for a while until we approach the legislature, perhaps with the help of Senator Inahosa, who's a new state senator, covers this district and is very open to listening to what people want in terms of government in this part of Texas. So if we don't take this step, we can't ask the legislature in Austin to breathe life into our town. And that's what we need. We need that mantle of constitutional legitimacy to go and make the argument that we ought to have self-rule in this little place in Texas, the only little place in Texas that I know of that doesn't govern itself. We called this meeting because a number of people for the last, well, since back during the election campaign said, "Well, you know, that municipality thing, that's kind of interesting, but I have a lot of questions." And we've been trying to write them down and keep track of them and to gather as much information so that we'd be in a position to answer them to the best of our ability. Some of them we can't answer. We don't know what will happen if we or some portion of the navigation district board goes to Austin and tries to change things here. You can't predict politics. But we will have a very good shot at it. As you can see from this whiteboard, I'm going to go over the numbers with you in a little bit. But then we will have ample time for questions, discussion and debate. And we would ask that we all dedicate ourselves to keeping that part civil. First, we wanted you to hear briefly from a few neighbors who we've asked to share their thoughts. And one of them is our friend, a former county engineer, Richard LaFever. Richard, if you would come up and say a few words. And then we have a few more people who we've asked to just share their thoughts on the importance of making this decision today. I don't have stairs on this side.
Oh, I'm tall enough to be a person.
There you go. And I've been violating the Renee space rule here.
So those of you who don't know my name, Richard LaFever. I've been an engineer for 25 years. And I actually came out here, I used to live in McAllen. And some of you know, I know Jack, I worked with some of y'all before. But I used to actually come in here on a contract basis for Willacy County. I worked with Judge Keater and did inspections out here. My dad's dream was to always live out here. I've been coming out here since Marsh Ducey was playing tight end at Rambleville. And I've been coming out here that long. I showed my kids a picture sitting at the marina not too long ago. And I was eight years old. And then I had another picture sitting at the Redfish Motel. My dad always wanted to live here, never got around to it. I decided I was going to move out here. So my wife and I, we moved out here in 2019, actually came out here in 2018. And when I moved out here, it was just this quiet community, everybody loves to fish. I didn't know there was going to be so many people. I kind of feel underdressed. But I know it's hard to say it for Mansfield, right? But you know, one thing I've done is I've been an engineer. And the engineering firms I've worked for sweep, my firm specifically, works for municipalities throughout the valley. I've done design work for McAllen, San Juan, Donovan, Mercedes, Brownsville. So I've worked with cities and I've worked with commissioners. And I'm not proud to say this, but I've dealt with politicians for 25 years. And I've seen good, I've seen bad, I've supported good, supported bad. But it's kind of one of those secrets. I told Patrick, I said, "I'm tired of sitting on the sidelines." The worst thing to do is complacency, is to put your head in the sand. And I'm going to be the first to say I did it. I voted, I helped some people get in and they did nothing. I'm like, y'all know who I'm talking about. I supported, he was a friend of mine, I supported him. We thought change was coming, no change. So I've been sitting here and I've been sitting on the sidelines. And I hear Marsh and I hear everybody talking about, I hear this, I hear that. You know, word of mouth, gossip, gossip. But you know, my daddy always told me gossip is 50% true. But what I didn't want to do is sit on the sideline anymore. I hate to use the football term, but you're going to hear me because my dad was a football coach and my brother's still a football coach. I just got tired of sitting on the sidelines. I've had my own instances here where, since I moved here, I've had some run-ins within that district. I've seen what certain individuals can do. There's a non-district person, a board member that coaches my son in Little League. I have breakfast at the Breakfast Club every other week with another commissioner. So what I tell them does not fall on deaf ears. It just kind of seems like it just doesn't get through to them. And what I've noticed in other cities is, and I know Patrick's going to hate this, but you know, being in the valley, if they don't like something, they swallow their pride and in two or three years, they change it. I'm going to be very honest with you. Mr. Kennedy, I know him, I supported him. I think we're on the right track, I really do. I think he's fine, he's upstanding. Every time I go by to bother him, he listens to me. I think we're getting there. But what I wanted to tell you today is the worst thing to do is put your head in the sand. If you like the municipality, you know, go for it. If you don't, then let's discuss it. What is it? We know there's a problem, but we're all here. It's time to get together and say, okay, kind of like a mediator to divorce. But, and by the way, I did have a city attorney, city attorney, Dennis Mieduslaw firm. He was going to come here today. He apologized, he called me an hour and a half ago, typical attorney. And said, he goes, "Rich, if you want to give out my number and give out my email, they can email me questions and I'll answer. Give me a day or two, I'll answer." So if you have any questions, you can come up to me, I'll get his email and so forth. Because I know you have questions about the municipality. Patrick and I had this, we've said it a couple of times. I'm sitting in the middle, okay, I'm not going to lie. I'm sitting in the middle. I know for some of y'all, y'all may not. I'm just saying that I think we need to figure out something because complacency is just not the way to go. And I didn't realize so many people here, so obviously there's something going on. And with that, a couple of other things is, you know, I've noticed around here, and now the engineering nerd side from me is going to come out. There are just things here that could be bad. You know, when they built the subdivision, you know, I kind of said, "Hey, that's great, more people." And I know some of y'all are like, "I don't want more, Port Mansfield stays small." You know? Then I saw the highlights come in. That's atrocious. If you go to the subdivision over there by my house, they put it all underground. They didn't pay a penny. AP did it because they're going to recapture their fees. I bet you all know this, but AP has a recapture for residents of Port Mansfield. I paid $122 per meter. So I don't know what happened when it came to the wires because I do do design for subdivisions. I don't think my client would have been too happy with those highlights. You know, I noticed some drainage issues. Those are things that I think could be fixed. I can remember times seeing, driving by Mr. Kennedy's house and seeing a manhole overflowing with wastewater. I used to work and get inspected with TCEQ. That was a major violation. I bet y'all didn't know that, did you? There's one over there near Todd, there's one, I think, at H Street. So there's some things here from the engineering side of me that I'm sitting here thinking, wow, hey, we need to start thinking about something else. I mean, you know, it's just like right now, I sat on the board and this is what really started bothering me. I was on the PV board for a year and then someone conveniently didn't tell me you had to run every year. I guess that was their way of saying they didn't want me on there. But we're paying more than a mo for water, wholesale water. And the engineer from the city community, and I said, "Why are we paying them and they're passing on our TCEQ violations to us?" We're having to pay for fines for tri-heli methanies, which is, that's bad. And we're paying them wholesale water for good water and we're getting passed on our violations. I asked for a year for the contract and I was a PV member and I never got it. So when it comes to engineering and just overall health of the city, there's some things that I've asked, you know? 50% of me likes the road out there by my house because I don't have to have a sandy oyster shell road that blocks my vehicles. I'm not kidding. I had a truck here that they had an ounce of rust in three years, that thing was almost gone. And we've got a road out there and I was like, what do I need a road for? And then, of course, I saw NAS. And to make a long story short, the other 50%, he said, "Where is this road going to? Why do we need it?" Because the 50% liked it because I knew Dad gummed well and ready that I had the only road that was never going to get paid. And there's a reason it wasn't going to get paid. All you got to figure out who makes them the city and my road wasn't going to get paid. But there's some other things that I've read and I want you to know from an engineering standpoint, from working for the municipality. I know some things come to light regarding some people being paid for services on that board. And I admit, it just looks like straight nepotism. I don't know if that's true or not, I'm pretty sure we'll find out. Things like that shouldn't be happening here. You know, this entity here is a public entity. It doesn't matter whether you're for or against. If the Rambleville District decides to get rid of a bus, what do they have to do? What's the law say? What do you got to do? Auction it off. How come that doesn't happen here? And you know what? I heard that straight from the horse's mouth, we're under the water code. Well, I can read and the water code Title 60 says what? Got to be auctioned off. So I don't know where that person decided he became God. And that's one of the major reasons I'm here. I don't have any quarrel with anything else. I just, I hope, one thing I'll get out of this, let's do something. You know, complacency, I've seen people put their head in the sand until Marsh. I said, "I just don't want to be putting my head in the sand anymore." And there's some things going on here, folks. I mean, and from my point, it's 25 years, I guarantee you, if it is happening over there, the feds will be here. I'm just telling you, been there, done that. So I just wanted this opportunity to, like, whether you're for them in this valley, you know, maybe there's another option, we get the legislation, we get more demand, we change things. Let's do something. I'm with you, you know? I'm not going to sit on the sideline anymore. And you know what? I've heard this too, and I want everybody to know this. I've heard this crap. Well, nobody can run this system. I can, I guarantee it. I can balance a checkbook and we don't have to pay an engineer or a draftsman. I'll do it for that as part of my salary until we find somebody for six months. I told Mr. Kennedy, I said, "You want somebody else, let's find them. I'll run it. Heck, everybody can balance a checkbook." Right? So like I said, I'm here to help the community. If y'all need me, I'm here.
We're glad you're off the bench now. Jack Vicklin is a custom home builder here. He's been to more navigation district board meetings than anyone in this town or this county or this state. And I asked him to say a few words today because for him, this is the culmination of this debate of a long process that he has witnessed firsthand. Jack?
Well, if you don't know me, my name is Jack Vicklin. I've been here for 42 years, building homes in what is now known as a census designated place. I thought I was living in a town. And in the time I've been here, I've seen certain individuals, certain decisions made by the navigation district that have nothing to do with the welfare of the community, but it's helped certain people. And I'm not going to get into all that, that's under the bridge. But I would like to see this town become a town. I have a daughter who owns a house here, I have a grandson that's living here, and I want them to live in a town of Port Mansfield. That's why I support the city of Port Mansfield.
Mark Green is a member of our executive committee, is a marine biologist who pioneered the shrimp farming business in the god-awful step of West Texas and succeeded until the Chinese ruined the market. I've read his book, it's a wonderful book as a business story and the intersection between markets, government and entrepreneurship. And he's a great entrepreneur and we're going to ask him to say a few words.
Yeah, so you may know me from my wedding events, right? I developed that business here in Port Mansfield. I spent a lot of time on the coast when I was younger and built the first hatcheries, did the first research with people on the coast and parts of wildlife who were spawning redfish and trout. And Port Mansfield was always where I wanted to go. It was my dream forever. And so, you know, a little more than 10 years ago, we were able to make that happen. And for me, I'm 100% for the municipality because I did a lot of studying about small municipalities. There's over 500 municipalities in the state of Texas that are under 1,000 people. There's one in the valley that has three people. And I guess they swapped out being mayor and alderman or whatever. But they saw the advantages of becoming a municipality. And you know, part of it is, if you want some convincing, read the freaking budget of this navigation district. We had a budget, you gave it to me, I think it's 23, 24. And the line items are vague. They're all rounded to the nearest zero, which is questionable. I'm not an accountant, but I don't think any of our checkbooks are all round to an even number. That's kind of weird. But for instance, you know, we pay for boat slips. I have two boat slips. The navigation district generated in that year, over $380,000 in revenue from the boat slips. They spent right at $30,000 in maintenance on boats. So less than 10% of the money, we paid them. And everybody knows the shape those slips are in, the marine others. And you know, we're not getting, you know, this is what the people that started America, you know, fought for. This is why they dumped the tea into the harbor, because a foreign government was ripping them off. We're being pimped out by the navigation district and it's time. If we vote for that municipality, that's our declaration of independence. And there'll be a war, just like there was for our forefathers, right? There'll be a war because you can't separate thieves from their money without a fight, I guarantee you. But this is where we need to go. And anyway, I just wanted to, one more thing to drive it home. So I'm in my shop packing boots and I hear what sounds like a waterfall. And I go outside my little building down there and that sewage list station is dumping hundreds of gallons of raw sewage right into that ditch. Does it every time, took pictures, timed it, every two minutes, probably 200 or 300 gallons of raw sewage going right into that ditch. Then backs up and backs up into everybody's yard. And everybody's dog plays in it and it comes sleeps with you in your bed and your kid's playing it. And it's like, my whole life, I never lived in any place that would allow raw sewage to be able to be in people, where people live. I just, I don't get it. And if you think they're ever going to fix that stuff, we can't even get them to fix the stuff that's been here before and the stuff we're asking for. So there's a lot of problems and I, you know, I want to be able to go to one of you guys that's the mayor or that's the alderman and say, "Look at this, you know, let's fix this. We're all living here." They don't live here, they don't care. They live somewhere else and it's never going to change. So I'm 100% municipality.
How's it going? Hill Culpepper is the guy who brought us together the first time in April of 2023. And I wanted him to say a few words. He's a businessman, he's a farmer, he's a long-time resident here. And I think his latest activity is becoming a sport fisherman somewhere in Mexico.
I've got a few documents I may sit down. Since I have a cataract. Now, about a few years ago, I stood up because I had a what was going on.
He got my confidence.
And I got a lot of documents that I've been going through in my last 25 years. And that, and I purchased some property in the early 2000s. And it's been lots of twists, in my opinion, especially with friends and the director of the port. I first started with Mike Wilson when I proposed a car wash, a convenience store for my family daughter. And it was all turned down by the port director. I don't even think it got through the board of directors. And then I always send them documents and they don't ever keep any paperwork. So I would kind of explain that we need to change so the port directors doesn't have so much control over the port. And as people, it's like a dictatorship. And we need a town that we can get a deed to our lands so we can go to banks and borrow money or sell things. I tried to stay out of politics, but sometimes you get enough of a dictator controlling everyone in port. And back in 2011, I stood for long. And this document, you could read right now to the board and it would be the same thing. And I'm going to put a few points. In 2011, what I said, I said, "I try to be brief, not to make it personal, but it's very hard not to because I've a lot invested." it's very hard not to, because I, a lot invested in time and money in this community. I asked if I could buy more land adjacent to my lots to help getting access to the main road, since I was going to try to build a convenience store and other things. And I was, I was told that I didn't have enough money. Instead, they chose to loan fifty thousand dollars to the marine storage to buy that land, the one that Harding got in two thousand ten. And for some unknown reason, the old director, Mike Wilson, defended marine storage position at these meetings, even the bidding on the property appeared to be corrupt. For example, I requested a big bid package from the Navigation District. When I got this package to read it, I noticed that marine storages by Mike's office was already in, in the name of the leasee. And so, this is quite a good example why our community is divided. And the port manager had nothing to do to help our community stick together. And this is why we're so divided here in our community. Nobody's treated the same way. It's always business as usual about a special deal that very few got. They were more worried about the new prospects to come to Port Mansfield instead of taking care of the people and businesses that have been here for years. And this is what I stood in front of the board in two thousand eleven to talk to. And back there then, they did have to replace a bid for that land, and they had to publish it in a paper. And this is an example of the paper. And, and this is what you had to bid on this document. when I wrote to talk to, let me see. In two thousand twenty-two, when I was tired and did not publish sale of a lot, and the paper for other bids said I knew something was wrong. So, I wrote to get on the agenda. And this is what I wrote, the port director, to get on the agenda. I wrote this email. And then Ron Mills wrote me right back that said he already had my lease out for months. And first and foremost, you don't apparently have a misconception that you're, you're level of ownership and control of above properties. You do not fact on any of the lands that are listed on the leases. You have a leasehold interest of lots where you do own them and are any rights that are affiliated with ownership. You did not purchase the ownership and improvements listed on the lots. However, the leasehold owner of the port cannot control the raw form or wanted use of improvements on your property. So, they didn't want me to talk in front of the board at that time. So, he tried to, he tried to, he wrote me a lease. They went up on my lease four or five thousand dollars where I wouldn't give a talk to get on the agenda. And this is a copy of a lease that he sent me before the agenda, before the board. And he, he pulled out the first two pages of my old lease and wrote a new lease, which is a fraud. And, and he sent it to me acting like that was a new lease. And this is, this is a document. And, and in my opinion, it's a fraud. You can't have the signatures from two thousand twelve and ten years later write a new lease. And that's And Mark, what, this is Mark Tenaken. He's been here for years. And, and he, he had something to say when we was in his office. Ron Mills told me that he owned the land himself, and he could come on my property twenty-four hours a day anytime he wanted to. And, I mean, he thinks he won't open. He's like a dictator. And so, Mark, tell him what he told you also.
My family drove me down here in nineteen sixty-nine. And I've watched a lot of things go on in this town. Of course, I was living in nineteen sixty-nine. No change. But Hill and I went to Ron Mills' office. Hill was in the office doing paperwork. And my family's always been that family that pretty much, like Richard said, put their head in the sand, followed the pro quo. Ron Mills looked at me and told me that my family has never owned anything in this town. And if I thought they did, I was wrong. That he owned all the property in Port Mansfield, and he could do whatever he wanted to with that property. That pulled my head out of the sand. And I was an innocent bystander in the meeting just because he and I came down here in the same truck. There has to be something changed in this town. We've got to stand up. I don't know municipality. I'm an electrician. But I do know we have to change, and we have to stand up for ourselves.
Also, everybody wanted to have transparency. So, I started writing, when I went before the board, I would give the board members a certified letter. And Stacey Ray's always wanted transparency. Well, I get the, let's face it, Ray's letter back. She never did any more than it. So, she doesn't want transparency. And I got another one back, but I won't tell you who it came from. It was Ted Kinnon. Ted Kinnon. So, and I wrote with the wrong Mills.
All right, all right, all right.
I wrote a letter to Ron Mills. Never heard a word.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mark, very much. Now, I want to just go through the numbers really fast so we can get to questions. A lot of people have puzzled over how we make a new municipality functional, sustainable, with a tax base that works. We're not trying to create a new tax base by going for a municipality. There's only going to be one, there's only going to be one government entity here, even though we might get a municipality and be a municipality in name only until we convince the legislature to transfer the assets and the, and the land to the city of Port Mansfield. I think that's doable. I think it's a better than fifty-fifty chance that we can convince the legislature to do that. But we won't know until we get into the process. And we may fail the first time and get it the second time. And in the process, however, in the process of doing that, we will still have powers, the powers to say no, in, within municipal boundaries, that we, that are conferred on us by the Constitution. And within those two square miles, which we're entitled to as a type C general law municipality, that means we have a population somewhere between two hundred and five thousand, we'll be able to establish zoning codes and land use requirements that will give us the ability to either extremely slow down or stop anyone trying to put the container port here. The, the, so, so what we're talking about here, this is the Navigation District revenue lineup from their P and L budget document that shows that basically the revenue is a little bit over two million dollars a year. The components of that are the fees, both commercial and residential, the total about five hundred thousand. The residential lease fee, I was surprised that it seemed kind of low, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And, and the commercial fee, which is, which is great, a total of five hundred. Boat stalls, as Chairman Kennedy has pointed out, you know, that's an important number. That's a third of our income. And people who are thinking about the future ought to think about boat stalls. Down payments on, on leases, three hundred thousand. The ad valorem tax that the county collects and transfers to the Navigation District based on a mileage rate of point zero eight three per one hundred of your valuation of your property adds up to six hundred this year. Earlier, Mr. Mills was calling it six hundred and ninety thousand at the meeting I was at last week. They were calling it six thirty-seven now, but they expect it to be sixty-five, six fifty-five this year. And then there's miscellaneous revenue strings in there for another hundred and fifty. There's your basic revenue today of the Navigation District. What we're talking about is, is not changing anything here. All of this, if we got a municipality, would just move over, add some back, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And the way we would make that up, people have said Mario Garcia was really good at digging me with this question all during the campaign. He said, what are you going to do to plug the hole of that six hundred and whatever thousand dollars it is after you get a municipality? Well, when we got into the budget hearings, watching Chairman Kennedy and Mr. Kendrick, Mr. Kendrick, who turned out to be the investigative auditor this, this year, I don't know if he's done it every year, but he did a great job of scouring through the budget of the Navigation District this year and finding a, a good bit of fact that could be cut out. And so did, so did Chairman Kennedy. And together, I think they made, they made a lot of progress this year. I haven't seen the final product yet, but I, I was there just this last Wednesday for the, the, the May twenty-first meeting. What you see, what, what we did was we looked through the budget and, and a possible municipal government. What would we take if this was transferred to us? And what we would take is, is first a big minus, is Ronald Mills and all of his benefits, which are hidden all over the, the budget and even in the P U D budget. And, and the headquarters, the headquarters staff, et cetera, we reckon that's in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Mills has hired a PR firm that, that had been on the job for three months, but there's no sign that it has. And it's seventy-two thousand dollars. And Mills wants to hire a deputy about seventy, he's talking about seventy thousand dollars plus benefits and all that. So, those two together would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the board, under the keen eye of, I guess, the chairman and Mr. Kendrick, have already X'd out the thirty thousand dollars that Mills was secretly paying his son for twenty-five hundred dollars a month as a marketing specialist. He's just at high school. And then, this is a tough one. And my friend Renee Taft here has been, has been quite appointed on, on this. I, I think that we need to look, we need to have, if we become a municipality, a review of our policing structure. No offense to anyone who's currently serving. We have a great team in the police force, but it is a police force that is run by Ronald Mills. And by definition, because you now know enough about Ronald Mills to understand this, it is a politicized police force at times. And that's nothing that, that's something no town wants. We have to sit down and pray with those, with the current police structure. I think Sheriff Salazar, and he has sent us a deputy here today for our security. We really appreciate that. That is Deputy We really need to sit down and pray with them about the structure. Maybe we could have the sheriff come in. The sheriff provides police services to San Pralita, not suggesting that that's the best thing for us, but it might be part of what we need. And it would save us money if it were part of, of, of the policing that, that we have. But we need to look at it because we have gone from zero to almost four hundred thousand dollars a year in the, in the space of Ron Mills' tenure as the director of police. And, and that is something that's going to take, take some time to review and to make a sober judgment, supporting the police, because we do. But to have good policing that satisfies the community, makes it feel safe. The hotel tax, I, I'm not an expert on this, but I, I hear the chamber every year lament the fact that they're at the mercy of Judge Guerra, how much he decides from the hotel tax revenues to share here, even though we, we are a big part of the hotel tax generating, generated for county revenues. I think this year he cut it down to the farthest it's ever been, but down eight or fifteen thousand or something like that. And it's been as high as eighty to a hundred thousand in the past. It's a lot of money. There's, there's, the hotel tax generated in, in Port Mansfield is a serious number. We need to, we need to capture that. That belongs, what belongs to us is tax revenue as a municipality, we ought to have. And if we get back to Judge Guerra, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, that ought to put him in the mood to share with us what, what we think is ours. So, anyway, we went through the, all the budget issues. Some of our numbers are not as good. I'm sure Mr. Kendrick could do a great critique of some of our auditing. The, the commissioners are not CPAs. We're not CPAs, but we looked at it and we looked for the fat. And we think that there's probably eight hundred thousand to a million dollars you could take out of the Navigation District budget, and that that would plug this hole and might even allow you to reduce the residential lease rates under a municipal government. And of course, you know, municipality in, in the future, I've heard several people talk about this leasehold, you know, want a deed to your property. Hill is, is a big advocate of that. A number of people have mentioned it to me. That is something that a municipal government can address. The Navigation District has refused to address it over the years, won't even talk about it. They, they like to refer to us as the lessees, and sometimes in a contemptuous tone. But that is up to us. And once we have a, a municipal government, they can figure out a system. Maybe everyone who has a house here, a piece of property, can make an application and send it to the new government and say, I would like to convert my leasehold to a deeded property. And we, we have to develop a procedure for that, in which we have to make sure that we don't lose too much revenue, that it undermines in any way the, the fiscal, fiscal stability of our, of our budget, but doable. Now, I think the commercial, it takes longer. And there's some things that need to be investigated on the commercial side that haven't been investigated yet. Mr. Chairman Kennedy and Mr. Kendrick have been pushing to get a serious audit of some of the commercial land transactions that have occurred in the last five years. And, and we wish them well, and we support their efforts in, in that regard. One other thing, that's an important issue. I love this thing. This, this is something, I, I've heard people around town sharing the gossip or the rumor that we've got a big million dollar hole in our budget because of all the things that Ron Mills has underway. Well, the most interesting thing I think I heard at this week, this last, the two budget sessions was Mr. Mills explaining that the Tolu Harbor contract for finishing this, doing this bulkhead, finishing the space there that was still open and doing new bulkheads. And I'm not sure whether there's going to be a concrete pad there as well. But the total amount was nine point seven million, of which Tech Dot was going to cover eight point seven million, leaving one million dollars short. Well, as I think Mr. Kendrick or, or the chairman pointed out, well, that's if you do both phases. And Mills got a little jumping, and he said, well, yeah, I guess that's... So, so phase one, he acknowledged, is a six point three million dollar project. So, if we're short of funds, if we're short of a million dollars, it seems to me that we could, and I think one of these gentlemen suggested that, we can just postpone phase two, ask Tech Dot, you know, to give us a pass. We don't have the money this year. And we don't have any customers for phase two. We got, we, we don't have any customers yet for phase one. Yeah, we don't want it. Not if it's got a freight. So, take with a grain of salt, anyone who tells you that we're a million dollars short on Mr. Mills' projects, they can be adjusted, just like they adjusted. I thought they took a terrific decision, I think it was finalized, to walk back on this plan by Mills to get eight hundred thousand dollars in fencing around our airport. Tear down what's there and spend eight hundred thousand dollars on two miles of fencing. So, that's four hundred thousand dollars a mile for game fence. Now, I think it was Chairman Kennedy who pointed out, you know, he said, I don't know a lot about that, but I've checked with a couple of people, and the biggest number I can hear for per mile game fencing is about twenty-three thousand dollars, right? So, how do you get to eight hundred thousand dollars? And that was going to require us to pay ten percent of the bill, which is, what's going to be eighty thousand dollars. Well, that's real money. And I think they're going to zero it out. There's no reason that they can't work with the fencing they have. And Mills keeps implying or inferring in his discussions that somehow we're legally required to have fencing on that airport. There is no Texas law that requires airports to fence themselves. I'm a pilot. I, I know a little bit about this. I live on an air- get everybody to buy a fence, and it looked like the FAA is, you know, is doing big security, prevent a new nine eleven. Well, fencing had nothing to do with nine eleven, but it's cost a lot of airports, a lot of money, and it's cost the taxpayers a lot of money, it defends a lot of places, and it becomes a barrier between the community and the airport, which you don't want to do. You want the community to support local aviation. Anyway, they have found a number of these issues. So I think we ought to salute Chairman Kennedy, Mr. Kendrick, for really trying to reduce the budget as it exists now. And I just want to say, with all respect for them, that, that, that this is, this is really, that is really important to us too. But it is a separate issue about the future, what we want to do for the future, and whether we want, over time, the Navigation District as our government. I think we're almost ready for questions, and what we'd like to do so that we can hear folks is to have, have you come up and grab the microphone.